The time is six fifty-nine. I'm going to get started, call the order.
Hey, Father, we thank you for this gathering here tonight and for the privilege of serving our city. Father, we pray that as we discuss this agenda and make decisions for our city, that we will always put our citizens' interests above our own. Help and guide us to discuss and be efficient in handling the issues that are present, presented to us, and give us your grace and wisdom to come up with the best possible solutions that will benefit the people that we serve. Father, we thank you for our city employees as they do the work of our city, and keep our city crews safe as they work out in this dangerously hot weather. Just protect them and watch over them. We pray this prayer and ask that you watch over all of us as we go about our daily lives. We ask all these things in your Son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for being here today. It's good to see you. Well, it's hot in the country, but the citizens out in our audience here. I also want to explain that I have ten hundred seats on vacation. That's the reason that I'm hosting this meeting. Okay, so do we have any citizens input, first, I'm sorry, announcements first? Do we have any announcements? I have a couple, I guess. We will have a meet and greet for the businesses from the economic developments on August the twenty-fourth at five P.M. at Deer Run Golf Course. All businesses in our town are welcome to come meet us and greet us for the economic development. We'll be observing some refreshments there. And then on August the nineteenth, we're going to try to do movies in the park again.
I have something to add to that. For those of you that did not go to Movies in the Park, it was really pretty good. It kind of brought me back to the old drive-in movie days, you know? And the movie was incredible. You know, I was glued to it the whole time. And the wind kept the bugs off of us. It was pretty pleasant. It was a good time.
Any other announcements? Mary?
I just want to invite everybody to the Keep West walking beautiful meetings this Thursday here in City Hall, six thirty.
And I think on Mary's, because it's Keep West Walking Beautiful. Just like to say thank you for inviting everyone to the rededication of the Memorial Garden. That was beautiful. The marker is absolutely fabulous. They did a great job on that. And keep up the good work. It's showing. Everything in the park is looking really nice. And also I think maybe since nobody from the chambers here, just saying thank you to the city of West Walkin for letting them use the park for the Jam Fest. The fireworks show was amazing. And I don't know how many people were there. I would say probably thousands came and went during the day. So it was a really good event for them. And I know if somebody could have been here, they would have said.
Yeah, they actually have a meeting.
Yeah, they're having their board meeting tonight, so. Enjoyed that.
Okay.
I think it's important that everybody knows that the water plant upgrade has made some progress. What do you think, Michael? We're forty percent?
We're pretty close. We had a meeting today and they're projecting September, worst-case scenario, October first, hundred percent.
We had some parks backorder problems. I mean, that's normal. Unfortunately, this day and time, but that was, that was something that we all made a decision to make go forward. And there is good progress being made, so.
Thank you.
We did also find out today that on the second grant, that we have now moved up into the top percentile for qualification.
Excellent. Excellent. Any grant the city, it is good for us.
That second one is, that second one is really, really, really awesome for our water system.
Very awesome.
That's good news, Michael. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go on to the citizens' input related to the agenda items. Do we have anything? Doesn't look like it. So we'll go on to our consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion. Are you ready?
On the consent agenda, I have a request. On the, and I'm not, I don't want this to be a big deal. On the city of, on the director's report, I would like to scratch the very last lines going forward. All events need to be, to reserve and pay for any spots needed for their event. I think that would come back to bite us later. Because if you get someone, say, like the chamber shows up and wants to throw in ten or fifteen thousand dollar fireworks shows, then we need to do, give them all the concessions we can to get a fireworks show for our citizens that does off. And so anyway, without making a big deal out of it, I'd like to just scratch that one line.
Could we, any other? Could we maybe say reserve and/or? I mean, because if they do need it, it would be good for them to reserve them, for sure. Not saying they have to pay for them. But, I mean, that would also be discussed within the council. The council would agree for them maybe to not pay or to pay. Could we say reserve and/or? Just say, just add and slash or there?
I think that would be a good compromise on that. Because then it would still go back to the council and whether we want, maybe we wanted to give them the spot.
Right. We all, I mean, we always hear about these events typically, and they come to council, and we may make a concession and say, okay, y'all can have the park. But even if, even if we were to tell people that they, we still need to leave the responsibility on them to reserve them, because us all agreeing, you know, and the council saying, yes, you can have our park, that's not us reserving it. I mean, we're not making the plans for them. We're just giving them the concession.
And we're also, we're forming that new event committee too, so they may need to have some input in this too.
This may not have to have anything.
I mean, I like this. It just, we need to, yeah, we need to.
I understand the purpose of it. I just don't want it to come back to bite us later.
So maybe if we just put a slash or, it sort of seems.
Chair will entertain a motion on that?
Well, it's just a report.
Just a report. You'll just change the course then, Mike?
We're just changing.
Okay, then. All right. That'll work for me. That will work for me. Okay. Any other comments on our consent agenda?
I'm going to ask that everybody starts really, really digging in to the P and L that you've got now. And then maybe in a week or two weeks, come ask for another one and dig into that one. That way, when we come into our budget workshops, we're sort of all somewhat up to speed, you know? Rather than coming into it and just looking at whatever they give us in our packet for that first budget workshop. So you may have some questions already. You may be able to make some notes. And yes, the amounts may change by the time we have our budget workshop from the last one that you came and got marked up. But even still, you could have it sitting over here to the side, and you know what line to go to and go, hey, guys, I was looking at this. This is what I found, what I'm thinking. And it may be that you talk to one of the department heads even, saying, hey, I'm seeing this. What's going on? And just trying to figure out, do I need to try to make a suggestion in the voted workshop? So my message would be just to really, really start digging into them. Because I know everybody looks at them, but, I mean, we all need to, we're all going to be in those workshops. And just make it easier on ourselves to maybe study them a little bit beforehand.
I totally agree with that. Kim and I had a long discussion about budget B every day on something that we were trying to figure out. And so I think that's a wise move on our part for us to look at them.
I was just going to add that this year, you know, we wanted that the, you know, if, let's say, an HOA wants to, you know, spend a portion of money to have some roads done in their neighborhood, we have discovered that we actually don't have an income line for that. So when you're looking at some of these numbers, they may be a little skewed because there's no way to reflect.
Yeah, that's, we can say that. I mean, that's something you definitely want to bring up.
But an admitted advise that we need to add those inside budget.
I think that's a great point.
Something to bring up in the budget workshop.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other comments on this before we go to a motion?
Is it possible on those budgets to give one an email to us every time you make some changes? Once a week or once every two weeks?
That might be, she makes it daily.
Yeah, every time they write a change.
Well, once a week. That would be good.
That would be really good.
Then they'd give you the weekend.
Well, that way you ain't got to train them too.
Yeah, and you don't train them and don't have to come get them. Everybody's at.
Thank you, Leon.
Leon, you made the motion? I make the motion to accept the consent agenda with those changes. I'll second.
Kevin Featherson.
Leon Minor.
Pam Reed.
Robin Lewis.
Chris Burkitt.
Moving right along, let's go into our discussion of the national pre- resolution, three eight four dash six, seven thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. Authorizing the submission of a home application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs and authorizing the mayor to adjourn to act as the city's executive officer and authorizing representative of all members pertaining to the city's participation in the home program. Now, Ms. Boiles is with us today, and I want to turn some time over to her real quickly to talk about the home program. I know we've already gone over it some.
Okay, yeah. The mayor and I met several weeks ago when we talked about the home program, and he thought it might be something that the city would be interested in. So if y'all do pass the resolution tonight to apply, we'll start the process. But he thought y'all might have some questions about the program. I'll just give you a brief overview and then just ask me anything that you want to about it. It's a program through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for low-income homeowners. And if they qualify, the program pays to demolish their existing house and build them a new one. They do have to sign a five-year grant agreement, meaning that they will live in the house. It will remain their principal residence for five years. After that, they can sell it, do whatever they want to with it. But they do have to stay current on property taxes. They're supposed to have insurance on the house. It's a, I'm doing the program right now in Quineland. It's the closest place to West Walkin. So I don't know if y'all have heard about it there. But I'm a consultant. I work throughout northeast Texas. I've been doing this for almost twenty-five years. Built hundreds of houses. It's a good program. I think y'all may have done this here several years ago, but it's been a while since you've done it. So like I said, if you're interested in doing it, you can pass the resolution. And then at some point, you will have to go through the procurement process to hire a consultant to administer it.
Anyone have any questions as you prepare this?
How many have you done recently in Quineland?
In Quineland, we've completed three. We're almost finished with three more. Those will be finished in August. And we have two more people who are qualified, so we'll get started on their houses sometime later this year.
Do you know if they have it in Wilkes-Barre?
As far as I know, they don't. Okay.
And someone asked me that the other day.
What's the typical cost for a consultant?
For a consultant, the way I get paid, I do get paid through the grant. So I get my fee for each house that's built. I make a fee off that, and then I make a percentage for the overall, managing the overall contract. But like I say, all the funds do come through the grant, so the city doesn't, isn't out anything for the consultant. Also, because of your population, there is no match in this grant for y'all, so. Basically, you shouldn't have any out-of-pocket costs. You do, you will, when it comes to writing the grant application, I cannot do that if y'all are considering hiring me to administer it. So you may have to pay someone to write the application, or like I say, the city can write it themselves. Other than that, you do have to come up with some upfront costs for each house that we do. The TDHCA requires a survey and appraisal, and we have to do all the title work for it. Those are invoices that you do have to pay. You won't get reimbursed for those until the house is actually built. So there is some money that you have to come up with that. You should be reimbursed for all that. If something happens and we don't build the house, it is possible you won't be reimbursed for those. We have run into instances, like it's happened to this for a long time, but we have had people who pass away, you know, before the house is built. We go through the whole process. I have had one or two people over the years back out at the last minute. So just letting y'all know, generally, you're not going to have any costs that you won't be reimbursed for, but it is possible.
So you, you actually do all the legwork for us? You interview the possible client or whatever you call them?
Right.
And you do help them with all the paperwork and all the legalities and everything?
Yeah, yeah. And we're very hands-on. We are in Texarkana, which is a couple hours away. But like I say, I work all over northeast Texas. I'm working in Quineland now, so we're used to being on the road traveling. But yeah, we meet with all the applicants in person. We go through it with them, the qualification process. We work with the title companies, surveyors, appraisers, contractors. So we do everything from start to finish. We do try to make it as easy on the city as possible because y'all have other things going on. So that's what you hire a consultant for.
If I understand correctly, in the beginning of this, y'all do quite a bit of homework yourself. And you interview the, you interview the homeowners, and y'all go through a pretty good link before you actually really start the process. Because obviously, y'all want to make sure it's going to actually work. So there's not very many of these processes that you start that you get halfway down the road and then it all of a sudden just falls off in the ditch.
Right.
And it's, it's something super circumstantial that causes it to not.
We, we don't do anything, the things that, like I say, the city has to pay for, surveys, appraisals, possibly title work, we don't do those until we are pretty sure somebody's qualified.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at.
They meet the income qualifications. They have clear title to their property. So we don't go to any step where you're actually going to have to spend money until we're, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent sure that they are qualified.
I just want to make sure that everybody here and people that might be watching understand that y'all are just going to knock on the door and go, hey, would y'all like us to build you a house? And it's, you know, give a little five-minute sales pitch or whatever, and then the city ends up spending money. That's not.
Right. And that's not how it works.
There's a great deal of work done before that ever takes.
Which kind of on that same subject, this is not a fast process at all. We tell the applicants, we tell the city, you know, all these steps take a long time. And so, I mean, it's going to be a couple of years before we're building houses for this. So it's not something that we start the program and six months later, we're under construction.
And something else we learned just through research too, is that they have to have a place to live. While this is going through the process, you know, while they're in the process of building their house. So they're going to be just, for a few months, while you guys build, you know, while this company builds their home for them.
Correct. It's voluntary relocation. So that's one of those things we go over with them when we do the initial interview. It's a good program, like any program, you know, it's not without its ups and downs. But like I say, I've been doing it for a long time, built lots of houses. And it's good for the city, you know, it gets rid of some of these houses that are substandard, that don't look good anymore. It's good for the homeowner, you know, you're helping somebody who wouldn't be able to make repairs or build a house themselves, so.
Could you describe what type of home they would be getting?
It's a three, well, generally, if it's a family of four or fewer, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house. And the pictures on the front of this little flyer are some houses we've built, to give you kind of an idea. Three-bedroom, two-bath, all electric, with a one-car carport. Refrigerator, washer, dishwasher. They don't come with washer and dryer, so. But they're nice houses, and they, they are all handicapped accessible, you know, whether somebody needs that or not. So that if they ever do get to the point where they need it, they are handicapped accessible. The city has an inspector on staff, yeah. So, you know, there are specifications that we have to meet for TDHCA, rules, lots of rules and regulations. And like I say, the houses are inspected. They're well-built. They do have a one-year warranty after they're built from the contractor. Oh, okay, okay. You use that company.
Any other questions? Can I ask a question? Hammy? How does the public, the general public, know about this program?
Well, we do try to publicize it as much as we can, and that's. People in town who may qualify.
Mm-hmm.
Word of mouth. We'll put it on the city's website. I don't know if y'all have a Facebook page. We, that, that seems to be a good way to publicize.
We're working, we're working on that.
But I know y'all have a website. We'll put it up there. You know, we try to get it into the local newspapers, that sort of thing, so. But like I say, y'all as citizens know, who's in town knows who might be interested. And a lot of cities, the code enforcement people are good at, you know, finding people who they think might be qualified. In Quineland, they've worked with us a lot on that, so. And, you know, either leave them a flyer, or just talk to them, or, you know, give us, you know, their name, and we can contact them, so. So like I say, especially, like, I know y'all have done it before, but it's been a while. In some cities that I've done it over and over, everybody knows about it, and it's not that hard to get the word out. But sometimes it is hard in the beginning. And also, it does sound too good to be true, so.
I think it was like in twenty-twelve or something.
So about ten years ago, so not, not too terribly long ago. But yeah, that's, it helps to have the citizens just let people know about it too.
So have y'all built any houses in Quineland yet?
Yeah, we built three, and we're about to finish three more. And then we've got two more who are qualified. They'll be starting this year. And they just got another contract, and we just got hired there again. So we'll start another three-year process with them. So this is a three-year contract. When y'all are awarded it from TDHCA, you have three years to do the program.
Excellent.
But it's not a competitive program, like a lot of other grants are. If you apply, you will be approved for it. You do not apply for a certain amount of money. You don't apply with other grants. Usually, you apply for a certain amount of money or for a certain project. You're just applying to be a part of the home reservation system. Then as people are qualified, there's a pot of money statewide, and we go in at that point and take out enough money to build the house per person. So the good thing is you can do as few or as many as you have qualified for it.
And I really want to stress that this is a project that helps the people. It doesn't necessarily help the city, because we're not getting the money. The money is being taken out to help our people.
Correct.
And we really, we really need to do something for our people. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve resolution three eight four dash six dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. Authorizing the submission of home application to the Texas Department of Housing and to authorize Mayor Jim Turner to act as the city's executive officer.
I second that motion. Kevin Featherson.
Leon Minor.
Pam Reed. Robin Lewis.
Chris Burkitt.
Okay, so we'll move right along.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will move right along to, to discussion or take action to approve the second reading of the ordinance three oh three dash six dash thirteen dash, it should be twenty twenty-three. In order to, the city of West Walkin, Texas amending, amending ordinance number two seventy-five dash ten dash nine dash twenty eighteen, providing for use of city dumpsters at the waste treatment plant. Improve the payment rates for use of city dumpsters and provide for an effective date. This is something we've already discussed in our previous, basically, this is the second reading. Chair will entertain a motion?
Wasn't there something we changed or?
We did. So what we changed, where we had single mattresses, we changed them to sets.
Okay. I'm sitting here reading this. I'm like, I know there was something.
Yeah, I think it's all on the back page.
It is.
Nope, maybe not. Maybe it's on the bottom of the front page.
It's, it's on.
Well, I mean, I see where it's, it's what you just said, but I just couldn't remember in my mind. We were going to change something. I just couldn't remember what it was.
I make a motion, we accept the second reading of ordinance three oh three dash six dash thirteen dash twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Leon Minor.
Pam Reed. Robin Lewis.
Chris Burkitt.
Moving right along. Discussion or take action to approve the second reading of ordinance number three oh four dash six dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending, amending city of West Walkin code ordinances, adding a new chapter thirteen, establishing child safety zones and distance restrictions where registered text offenders providing these ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances providing for serviceability, providing for government immunity, providing for injections, providing for penalty, providing for publication, and providing an effective date. This is another one we discussed last, last meeting, and it has to do with the park area. That it's a drug-free area, and that it's a child safety zone. So Chair will entertain a motion on this?
I make a motion, we accept the second reading of ordinance three oh four dash six dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Leon Minor.
Pam Reed. Robin Lewis.
Chris Burkitt.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, oh, where'd you go?
Chief.
Leave that around the corner.
Thank you, Chief Alderson, for doing this for us. It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has. We're happy to see that happen. Okay, so we'll move right along to new business. We're going to discuss or take action to approve Shannon Ferguson, our code enforcement officer, to release a master list of all major contractors associated with the city. Any discussion?
What's the purpose?
So I have a lot of people ask for a list of contractors that are registered with our city, so they know where to start now. Where I would like input is what we want released. I have some concerns about addresses, phone numbers I'm good with, addresses. Some of them use their home address.
I would say just business name and phone number.
And it's broke down under, you know, electrician, plumbing, so they know where to start. But we do have a lot of people asking for it. I've had several, like, manufactured home places. Other cities do provide them to them, and we do not.
I don't see a problem with it. I just take your, take your spreadsheet and just do two columns, well, three maybe.
Three.
Company name, what the trade is, phone number.
So do we need to maybe put some kind of a disclaimer in there, saying that we are not recommending them? This is just a list? Okay, because we don't want that to come back and bite us. Right. We're not trying to show favoritism. It's a list of every contractor registered, and any contractor is welcome to register. There's nothing that says they can't. In fact, in order to do work in our city, they have to be registered.
Okay.
This is a list of registered contractors in our city.
I think it's a good idea, and I think the disclaimer is a necessity on that. Because we don't want to be liable for anything that's said. And we can't guarantee they're still in business either.
Well, they have to register once a year, once a year.
Any other discussion on that? So the chair will entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we approve giving out the information with a disclaimer. The information should be limited to trade, name, and phone number.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Kevin Featherson.
Leon Minor.
Pam Reed.
Chris Burkitt.
So we'll go on to B. Discussion or take action from All American Dogs for discussion on animal control for the city of West Walkin. Shannon, you have some information for us?
Actually, the owner of the company is here to talk to you.
Are we on B or C?
So B.
B.
All American Dogs.
Oh, no, you should have done.
Yeah, B is, B is discussion and or take action, discussion about.
So actually, you're on the older than you're on the other side.
On the old.
The one that was sent out wasn't made from you originally.
I have one sent out. What are you going to email it for?
She actually did, but I forgot that.
Email them, cry.
It's one of them. I ain't got it.
Okay. So we have.
She really did email him. I just forgot.
No, I'm Bob Matthews. I'm the owner. Kurt, Kurt Storming. And this is my wife, Meredith. She's on that list as well. You guys, there's a couple ways we can do it. You can ask any questions. I can go through kind of what we do, how we do it, and then that'll fill in a lot of gaps. And then you can ask any questions as, as you wish.
That would be awesome.
Okay, well, we're All American Dogs. I started the company over fifteen years ago. We built a place out, well, the main, the main facility is about an hour and forty-five minutes from here. But we service. But we service towns like Fayette, Leonard, um, Caddo, Josephine, Lowry Crossing and about thirty other cities. So we, we've grown over the last fifteen years. We have cities now in eight separate counties. I have about fourteen employees who work for me. We're looking for some more right now. And, uh, so we started off working with small towns. Um, basically I started the business of the boarding and training business at the very beginning. I started doing chamber commerce meetings, things like that. And a few police chiefs were having a really hard time with their current provider. And, um, for lots of different reasons. And they asked me if I could do something like that. And I, I got an old state, figured out what I had to do. Started off with a, with a small little animal control, or a part of a building actually. Cause this is my farm. And I built it, I built it out, I threw it out. And, uh, lo and behold, folks don't always get their dogs. So we needed to adjust the size, adjust the drains and, and now many, many years later, we're, we're doing really good. Uh, so animal control, when something bites you, we come out and we quarantine it. Or we verify shots. If the dog's current, they can do what's called a home quarantine. Uh, they qualify per state law for home quarantine. And as long as people have the ability to quarantine it, we're all for that. We'd rather keep the dog in its home environment versus a vet's office or our facility. Um, we do have a satellite facility in Fayette. So that's, that, that's where the animals from here would go for, for the, for the week. And they would be transferred to the main facility on Friday. And then if a resident did call in and say, oh, it's my dog, we would, we, the next business day, we would facilitate the dog and transport it back out. None of your residents would ever have to drive to our main facility to retrieve an animal unless it's a Saturday or Sunday and they just really want Fluffy back. And if they want Fluffy back on a Saturday and Sunday, they gotta drive. Uh, Monday through Friday, we'll bring Fluffy right to their front door. And, um, and also loose dogs, we come out. Now, because you guys are a little further, all of our cities that are a little further away from our hubs, what we do is we provide a galvanized, uh, dog kennel, which will be locked. Cause I learned in the very beginning, if you don't lock it, random things get thrown in there. And we don't, and part of the reason you don't want that is if we don't know it's there, we can't make sure it has water. We can't make sure, cause it may not be seen for a couple of hours or a day. Depending on if, if, it's usually put in public works. But if it's tossed in on Sunday or Saturday, those guys aren't there. And we won't know until Monday morning. So that's why we lock it and keep it secure. Um, so cities are put by the PDs or companies. Sometimes public works are by the, by the police stations. Every city's a little different. Um, but it's a nice run, four feet wide, six feet long. It's got water bowls, food bowls, it's got, have a little roof on it, have paper stone bottoms. Uh, so it's really nice. And that way the dog can be placed in there or cat or whatever, um, until we get here. And that way the police aren't messing with it. So it's not, they're not wasting their time. Um, it just makes it easier while the trucks are out. Um, just see what else. We talked about, um, that, that would be, that would be a normal animal control call. Talk about bites. Um, oh gosh, if, if, if there's an animal deceased on, on a public road that's blocking traffic, we'll come out and remove it, obviously. Uh, we all also offer rule, rule for private property based upon what's going on. Yeah, that's, that's usually at the cost of the per property owner. Um, obviously if they're disabled, um, or have, have, have a significant life challenge. I help people constantly, all the time. And we'll step up and look to that, like we always do. Uh, we have people that take care of, if a horse or a cow gets struck by a car, we have, we have Pine Hills and a few other ones who'll come out and remove that animal. Um, that, and that's a, that's a, an ancillary service that we provide. We act as a vessel, we pay for it, you guys are reimbursed. It sits two hundred some dollars a month. Um, it took, sorry, two hundred dollars, two hundred some dollars per animal, based on the weight. So a deer would be a different weight as a, a twelve-hundred pound horse. So it depends on, on what they're picking up. Um, see my guys, they're all, obviously all certified. Uh, Kirk is a, is retired sheriff of Denton County of twenty-three years. AJ retired of fourteen years at Denton County. Um, I have another officer who's been a work for me part-time starting next weekend. I've had many police officers work for me part-time over the years. Um, and also some of my staff hired to become police officers. Cause the, the departments get to know my staff. And so I've lost a few people to that. So, um, I'm trying to think, oh, adoptions, live release, all the important stuff. So one thing that makes us different is it's very easy to bring dogs and cats into the facility. The hard part and part that takes more work is to get them to your homes. So we have a live release rate even right now, cause right now, all the COVID dogs coming back. Right now, there's more pressure on shelters right now than there's ever been. In, well, in fifteen years I've done this, it's insane. It's absolutely insane. Um, cause you have dogs, they're all about eighteen months old or maybe two. So that's the toughest timeframe, year, age-wise to be a dog. That's when they're acting crazy, like everyone remembers a lab from years three to fourteen, which is they're one of the best dogs on the planet. But up, but from, you know, birth to that time, they're one of the worst dogs on the planet. Unless you have heavy, heavy training and a kennel. And so, and so we're getting a lot of sporting breeds back right now, like high energy breeds. Cause they're, they're teenagers right now and they're acting insane. And so people don't want them and also folks are going back to work. That's also another challenge that people are facing right now. So, uh, that all being said, we do multiple external events. We have a five-on-see three miles of hope where the animals, after they go through their period of all-American, they're, they're transferred to miles of hope where they're vetted. Uh, and they're put up for adoption and they go to adoption events. And we also do adoption seven days a week at our facility. Um, and so, so that's how we are able to achieve a ninety percent or better live release rate, which means what wags in, ninety percent wags out. Um, obviously we can adopt things that bite people, things that are super, super sick or been hit by cars, stuff like that. We try to make them, you try to get the owners as much time as we can to pick them up, but also I'm not gonna let them suffer for days and days and days. So there's, there's, there's some tough calls we make, but we, we do the best we can and luckily we've done pretty well.
Is it only dogs that you?
Dogs and cats.
And cats.
Because All American Dogs must be a boarding, training place. So if the, the name's stuck and everyone knows it says that. Uh, we're trying to really push miles of hope. And someday as I get older, there's a good chance when we transition everything into miles of hope, make it all a nonprofit. But All American Dogs pays for all the staffing. So if you were to make a donation to miles of hope, that goes ninety-nine point, whatever percent goes to, um, the dogs. And the only reason it's not a hundred is the IRS forces me to take something once a quarter. So, and it wastes a thousand a quarter, five hundred a quarter, whatever, whatever they require, whatever the minimum is, I, I have to do it or I get in trouble. Um, and half the time I give it back. So depending on what we're doing, so.
If you find the pet owner and, and want to reunite them with the pet owner, is there a fee?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five.
Plus, well, and plus fifteen a day. So, what do you say?
Thanks for the resume.
To the resident, not the city, to the resident.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, include it as a user fee. And whoever uses, cause that's why, that's why our, the animal control is so inexpensive. Cause if you look at doing it yourself, we're about one-sixth the cost if you guys try to do it yourself. Um, between looking at facilities, maintenance, personnel, vehicles, all the various insurances you have to have. Um, we're, we're, we're very, very, it's very much reduced. But that being said, we still have to function. Um, and so that's, whoever uses our service gets, gets to pay a little bit. Um, one thing, if you, if there is no, if there is nothing, it's a reason to behave. And so, and honestly, if a dog's wearing a collar or has a microchip, we're gonna call it, we're gonna scan it, we're gonna call that chip. We don't want it at the facility, I don't want it. And, and if we don't leave the facility, if you don't leave your city, it's free. We give it back to them for free. So if, but once it heads back to, once it goes back to a satellite or the main facility, we charge. But we don't want the dogs and we want to give it to you for free.
You gotta recoup the cost of operation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna be paying you guys something, but I get it, that, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, it's just a fraction of what it costs.
So how, so how many times a week, I was reading, how many days a week, you, you just come once a week? How long are you here?
The controls, every city's all different, but we do a minimum, we use it about an hour. So then, then we get to know the city, we get to know the residents, we get to know all that stuff.
So how do you actually find the dogs that are loose?
We drag around. And also the contents are the police, public works guys already know who, who, you're gonna have a certain number of homes that cause a challenge and, and they, they know where they are. I've done this, I've done this for, for, like I said, over thirty-four departments and we're. We'll know who your challenges are and we'll, we'll figure it out.
We had a really, I personally had a really sad situation two weeks ago. We had a stray, well, it wasn't a stray, it had a collar on, but no tags, of course, that wandered up on our property. And I called every shelter in this area. I called Emory, I called, everybody could take this poor dog. And I have, I cannot take care of it. I don't have a fence. I have an older animal in the house that would not accept it coming into the home. And I cried all day long thinking, how am I gonna? I even called our, our fire chief here to see, please help me, I've gotta find this baby home. It was hot outside. And luckily a neighbor who was walking his dog, the dog ran to him and he wanted a playmate for his dog, so he took that dog home with him. It found a home. Thank God, cause I prayed all day that that poor animal would find a home.
That's a good end.
That was a good outcome, but that's not always the case.
Yeah, like right now, we've had a surrender program closed now for over a year. So what surrender is, is like, see someone, someone doesn't want the dog anymore. And they, they wanna give it to us. And before I would charge whatever, depending on the medical, vetting of the dog status was. We have different tiers where we charge. And that helps us get the animal ready to be adopted. And, but even that program right now is closed because I have to, I have to keep space for a call like that. And we feel like today, we had eight dogs coming today, luckily seven went home, or six went home, six went home. And which is really good. That's a good day. So only two stayed, the one of them's a little puppy dog, that big. And so the other one was a chihuahua or whatever it was. And, and so hopefully they go home tomorrow. Cause if we post that little tiny dog on our social media, she'll get bombarded, or you do. How does it go?
Well, I have to tell you, this dog hit the jackpot when that man took it home with him because he took it to the vet the next day, had it all checked out, it was okay, and she's pregnant. So she's now got a dog and he's got puppies on the way. So, but he doesn't care, he's a dog, he's in labor and he said, I, I will take care of them.
Vetted the dog, nine months old.
Yes. Yeah. And it was a full-blood Labrador, black Labrador retriever.
Yeah, part of what Meredith is saying, um, once you guys have us on board, if you guys choose to go that way, um, we will go on, we go on your Facebook page. So we try to take that pressure off City Hall, off the PD. Um, and that way, if someone goes looking for animal control services, it's on your website. Or it's on the front, wherever, however you guys advertise. Um, some folks put on their water bills, just depends on, on how you guys do what you do. Um, and that just helps take some of that pressure off. Also, someone calls in, you go, hey, call, call Bob, call, call somebody. And then we go from there, so. Okay, now I've talked a ton about different things. We did animal control trapping, we did provide, well, excuse me, we have traps, but it's, there's seventy-five dollars an animal for us to remove an animal. If you were to call Oregon or either other, they're about two twenty-five, two fifty per critter. So we're about a third the cost of the other folks. So we try to make it less, but we can't make it free. Um, and then it doesn't have to, it's just if they want to. So now ask questions.
So we get two or three snakebabbles a week, you know, I'm thinking there's snakes.
If they're poisonous, I will dispatch a truck. If they're not, it will cost you money. So non-poisonous snakes are not dangerous, I, yeah. Okay, funny snakes, we're. Really, really, really quick. Um, it was a police officer I knew really well, his name's Tinkle, Tinkle, Tinkle. Um, it was about, it was about two-thirty in the morning, I get a call, he's like, they're, we're going to the house, there's a, there's a, there's a copperhead. It's in the house, there's the, and tells all of the stuff's going on, the lady's going berserk. When he gets there, he calls me, you know, I'm already in route. I said, I'm gonna take if it's, if it's poisonous, I'm cool. If it's not poisonous, I'm gonna charge you a hundred fifty bucks. Um, and I want that money before I actually touch the snake. And I, I pull up and I get there and I guess, and then there's a pot with like seventy-five books on top of the pot. It's like seventy-five here at books. And to weigh it down so the snake can't get out. And so I start taking the books off the pot and I work my way down to the pot. And I go, I flashlight, I'm on the ground and, and they said it was little, so if you guys don't know anything about snakes, the most dangerous snake is a baby copperhead. Because depending on what it ate last, whenever it hits you, with, with an adult snake, they're usually a dry bite on a human. They usually don't inject venom into you. On a baby, whatever they got, you get. So if they haven't eaten in two weeks, you're gonna get a lot. If they've eaten, if they've eaten this morning, you're gonna get very little. And so anyway, so the size of it, it was, that's the size of a baby. So I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking, I just cracked, I have my flashlight under, I put it down, I'm gonna tinkle, I'm gonna kill you. He's like, look, look, look. I'm all, you wanna see the most expensive rubber band on the planet? That was a hundred fifty dollar rubber band. It was a, it was a larger rubber band that had that broke. So it's like, it looked like, it looked like a little baby snake. And the lady, it was, it was early morning, she, she freaked out, she got in the pot, she jumped on, she jumped on the ground, put it on the ground and she stacked all the books on top. And it was, it was, it was the white four-man rubber bands. And that's what the call was. Now, it wasn't Tinkle's fault, he didn't actually see it, he got the call from dispatch, cause she called nine-one-one. So they called him and he went to the house, so.
Do y'all help with livestock, livestock, loose livestock as well? We have, we get, we have, unfortunately, we've had a lot of those. I've seen a lot of them on Facebook, cows, goats, uh, I don't know, horses. We've had a donkey loose before.
We, the, the livestock is usually handled by the county sheriff's department. And that's in every county. Um, they're the ones that are responsible by state law to take care of it. Now, I have goats, I have donkeys, I have a cow, I have three cows now. I have thirty, forty chickens, whatever, I live out in the country. Um, so can I help with some stuff? Sure. Um, but it's more about trying to figure out where they live. And as soon as you know the town, you'll get to know where the black cows are, where the yellow ear tags are, where the blue ear tag, you'll get to know what's where. Uh, and usually the dispatches, but if you give them a tag, an ear tag, they, most of the time they register with, with the sheriff's department and they'll be able to tell which property it's from. Usually, if it's marked, not all of them are marked. All right, more questions, keep going. You're doing well.
Jenny, can I, can I have a quick question?
Sure.
You mentioned cats.
Yeah.
Um, so in some of the properties that are somewhat abandoned and distressed, um, the cats have moved in.
Feral cats.
Yes. Do you, and do you do any sort of spay neutering, release or just removal or is any of that?
Feral cats are a tough thing. Cause usually if you see a significant feral cat colony, you have somebody who's this guy that will be feeding them. Um, and they, and they don't realize, and it's usually someone who's, who's, they're usually widowed, they're usually older. And it doesn't matter if male or female, they both do it. Um, and the challenge is they think they're, they think they're helping. And mother, food is mother nature's birth control. So if you give an animal an artificial food source, instead of having one kitten, they'll have seven raised. And then most feral cats, nutrition rate are, if, if, if a quarter make it to adulthood, it's very rare. So, and then a bunch are hit by cars, a bunch are eaten by hawks. They end up, it end up, it's, it's, it's the opposite of what they think. They, they think they're doing good when they're actually doing harm. Um, and part of that is educating them and going, hey, this is the reality of what's going on. Um, now, the answer to your question, do we have, in the contract, we do offer a T and R. We had to figure out a local spay neuter around here, um, but it's not free, seventy-five per cat and it goes back into the same environment that where it came from. Now, that usually causes trouble, neighbors generally don't like that. Once they see my truck drop fifteen cats off in place, it usually, it usually makes them mad. And so I've had three cities do it and all three have stopped. Cause they got, they fear of fielding calls from very angry residents. So, but, but T and R, because, um, Harvard and a few other universities implemented T and R programs. And if maintained properly, they do work. Cause what happens is the adults, the, the cats you fix become adults, they're territorial. So in theory you have less cats. But the biggest issue is you have to get the people to stop feeding. Um, without, without stopping the feeding, it does not, you cannot fix the problem. So, cause these people, uh, there's one lady, she's a super sweet lady, she's in Valley View. Her and the, her and the Schwanz guy were best, best, best friends. She was in her late eighties and she had some stuff going on. She bought three or four bags of frozen chicken wings every single week from the Schwanz guy and she would just stand out there like pigeons, throwing chicken wings to the cats. And she had, I took seventy-three cats off her property. Once she got, once she got put into a rehab facility, her family called me and we trapped them all out, they're sixty bucks a piece. And also when you get that many cats living together, if one has E L I N A V, you're feeling leukemia, then it transmits. And also, you get that many cats living together, if one has E L I N A T V or feeling leukemia, then it transmits. And then you can't find those, then those are very difficult to hook in homes for. Oh, bugs, oh, bugs are really, really bad this year. Because even in my pasture, I got about two dozen of them, I'm about to shoot. Um, but they haven't, they haven't messed with any of my live animals yet. Soon as they touch one of my goats, one of my anything, they're all dead, they're all dead. Um, but they haven't given me a reason to shoot them. I, I don't shoot stuff unless I have a reason. Huh?
Usually it's dead.
Yeah, and I'm, but, but the, the, some, but they can get, in groups, they can become aggressive, especially on smaller, smaller calves and also smaller goats, things like that. But they have not killed anything yet, so I'm leaving them alone for right now. So.
Do you take calls for like a vicious animal?
Absolutely. When we come out. And we'll come out, now, let's talk about vicious. The, one of the best things, the dog tried to bite me. Dogs don't try to bite. They're faster than us, they're pound for pound stronger than us. If a dog wants to bite you, you're gonna get bit. There's no try. It either does or doesn't. So when we get there, we, we come up and go, what's going on? We figure out what happened. And then, so now some dogs do false charge, like labs are known, are known for, Phil the Bridge is known for. They'll walk up and they'll, they'll park and park until about six feet and they stop and go back. They're just trying to scare you. Um, so we'll figure out how he got out, how he or she got out, figure out where it lives. Either get it back home or we'll go pick it up. Um, if it won't come to us, we can be trapped out. There's different ways we can do to catch an animal like that. Um, but yeah, it's one of those things where I, I get lots of phone calls and it's, it's, it's trying to bite me. It's, it's gonna eat us. How long's it been out for? It's been out for a week. Has it bitten anybody? No. Okay. So, and, and this, we, we, after doing this for so, so long, you hear, head this stuff and kind of, you, you figure it out. So.
So do you also, do you, if someone calls you and says, I suspect maybe my neighbor is breeding animals?
Is what?
Someone suspects that someone is breeding animals, do you, do you, do, is that up to us to report to maybe the SPCA?
Depending on your ordinance, it's most likely not illegal. Uh, no, if they're doing, if they're doing a large scale, if they're doing a large scale puppy mill, that would be, that, that could very easily be illegal. Um, because they changed rules on the mills not too long ago. Um, so depending on how many, if they're registered, not registered, and also depending on how, how your ordinances are based, um, it may not be illegal if they're doing, maximum of four, but puppies usually, puppies are usually excluded from that count until they're three months, three months of age.
Yeah, or special puppies. But it's, it's four animals.
Yeah, if you're just not in there, then you're gonna go, four's four. So soon as they're abroad, they're violation.
It says four, so. It's, our, our ordinance does not.
So in that case, anyone who has a single litter is in violation of your ordinance, so you can, you can go, you can go get, if you want, if you chose to. Again, the, the book, the animal control is not that thick, but I'm also a code enforcement officer and the code book is super thick. I can go to any house, find anything wrong. I can find something wrong every house. And now, you choose not to because that's not usually, that's not our job. Our job is to keep it nice. And so, but people get all mad at us, like, I, I ignored the seventeen things over there. Um, I'm just going for the junk vehicle.
Okay, well, would you hear what I'm saying, a motion?
I got a quick question.
Firewood.
Not being on the current budget. How does this work to be able to start a new budget year?
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't start this tough new budget year. I think that's the whole, the sole purpose, to try to get it approved now. So that way, when we get ready at workshops, we all figure out how to plug this in there.
And I mean, what this costs a year, you can't even pay us out.
I, I agree, a hundred percent.
And we get to pay it out. So it's ten percent upfront, correct? So it's sixteen thousand eight hundred a year, sixteen hundred and eighty?
It's ten percent.
Up, upfront, and then your monthly fee.
Well, your first month, your first month is a ten percent payment. So your first month is, is hard.
First month is higher.
Yeah, because what it is, it's, it's the total amount of contract, ten percent, obviously, of sixteen eighty, sixteen eighty. And then the, the payment, which is a thousand or whatever it is. Um, and then that'll be your first month. And then for the rest of the month, then it's that lower amount for the rest of the year. So.
My only question is, where have you been?
I've been around, I've been around fifteen years. I'm, I'm getting old.
Kevin found him and I contacted him, I wanna say in February, so right after our budget started. And obviously, we weren't working that into it.
And I told her, I said, you're just trying to hold on to this until the end of the year.
And so I've been holding.
Really no reason to do it.
We get a lot of animal, a lot of animal calls.
I came across it and I told her about it and she found out it had, I mean, obviously, we knew it was gonna be a cost, we're like, crap.
Well, I can vouch for it in the book, that he cut a mill, and that's where I was. And he kennelled my canine, so he was kennelling Bosco.
And they have ninety-seven percent.
Bosco's a beautiful, beautiful, um.
Fifty-seven percent.
And they can give me all the addresses where they try to buy this.
So I wanna make a motion, um, that, uh, I guess, I'm looking at how this is written out. That we approve to go into a contract with all American dogs. Um, obviously, we won't actually exercise that contract until after our new budget year. So we can plug that cost into our new budget year, but that way we'll have it set up and ready to go.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Kevin Feathers.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll be safe. Thank y'all so much.
I'll take.
Uh, just keep these people staffed and personnel myself a moment.
Okay.
So we're gonna move now to the business seat. Discussion or take action, the property located at three oh five Vance. I'm gonna turn the time around to Shannon and explain to us what we're trying to do here.
Um, so actually, the property, the people on the property are here. Um, the realtor slash family member of this, basically what we have is a property where we had the right of way for a road to go in. The road did not go on that right of way and went on another one, one different way. So rather than the cost of what it would be for them to replat it, they would like us to abandon the right of way that should have been used and adopt the right of way that we did use and allow them to sell it by meets and bounds. And she can actually explain that a lot better than I can, because she knows more about it.
Hi, I'm Tanya with Century Twenty-One. Uh, Amy's also with Century Twenty-One. Uh, so she's got the listing and my husband Bobby is one of the heirs to the property. To my mother-in-law's estate. So originally, I think you have the original plat that's recorded, of record, and so the ones in question that are, we're selling eight. But the one in question is the one eleven and one thirteen. Do you see where it originally, the right of way east nut was to go between those two, uh, lots? Okay. If you look at BGNA's survey, their preliminary survey that they've done for us, that road, instead of bearing there to the south, it went right through one eleven. Did you see that on their drawing, on their drawing? So we're under contract and we're trying to do this survey. And that's the two points. We would like to be able, BGNA would like to be able to survey these tracks by meets and bounds. And if the city would abandon that forty foot, we'll get a better legal description from, um, BGNA for that, for a document to abandon that right of way east nut. That I don't think you're ever gonna use, but I, I don't know.
Right, right there, it looks like. See what she's talking about?
You kinda have seen how it veered to up through those two lots, yeah. And so it split our lot one eleven. Instead of going down what they originally had planned back in the day for it to go down through one eleven and one thirteen down to the water.
Yeah, it'd be like the backside.
Yes.
I think they were gonna have a marina or something down there at one time, many moons ago, I'm not sure. That's just.
Supposed to connect to Rabbit Road.
Yeah.
What about lot eighty-three? It looks like it's.
Now, that, eighty-three is across the street, um.
It looks like the actual road now is taking part of.
It's taken part of hers. I do not know anything about her situation, you know, eighty-three. So she, you know, the road did go through a section of hers.
So we, we don't have any legal right of way for the road that's there, right?
You don't have any what, legal? Well, it's. The city. We have that forty foot between the one eleven and one thirteen.
So basically, our right of way was to go between the properties and it ended up cutting through. So we didn't have the right of way for the bottom one, we don't have the right of way for the top.
And so, so would we? Right, so if we abandon, we abandon.
We abandon this part and accept this part, is what she's saying.
Well, we accepted, and.
Yeah, because we accepted, we don't know where eighty-three.
It's from them.
Yes, from the property.
Yeah, so you can't accept part of it without the other part though.
Well, it, it was already designed to go through eighty-three.
Right. From my understanding.
I understand, but, but the road, the road, this is, it was supposed to be like this. Okay? It was supposed to be like this. There's eighty-three. It goes up and then it's supposed to cut back behind one eleven. It was already, it was already designed, the, the right of way, this right of way right here that is current, that we're talking about today, included the corner of it being up into eighty-three and then it was supposed to come back this way. All we did is when we were on, whatever back then, just kept going straight. So this part right here is, is a moot point. Only thing we gotta talk about today is we cut through their property across here rather than back here. It's just.
Right.
Simple to me.
Yeah, and so. Sir, I'm sorry.
Are there any buildings, are there anything on eighty-three?
There's a trailer over there on eighty-three.
But it's already been established that it went through here.
Yes.
That's what she's saying.
I understand.
That's another owner. Yes, there is a trailer there on eighty-three. Um. And on one ten.
The eighty-three thing falls under the old, uh, the old right of way.
Yes.
It, that, that, the mishaps of the road doesn't affect anybody at eighty-three, it only affects one eleven.
Right. Our track.
The original, the original right of way was designed to be at eighty-three.
Right. My understanding. Per this plat.
Per this plat.
It's recorded.
It is recorded.
The original plat is recorded, that original one. This is just our preliminary survey and then we had to stop because it's like, okay, wait a minute. Let's figure out how to, the main thing was to be able to, by meets and bounds. That's a, one of the biggest.
Yeah, the one that shows where it was supposed to go between the properties not through it, actually has a book and page where it's filed.
I'm good with that then.
Yes.
That was the concern. Mom, you?
No. Yeah, we can get the survey company to come up with that legal, uh, description to be able to draw that document up for the city to, um, approve. There is a home, it is on, uh, you'll see it on one twelfth, I think it's on lot one twelve. And just a little corner of it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Little corner of one thirteen. Title's all good, uh, we're just kinda at this point to try to get the survey completed.
Okay. So. I make a motion that, uh, we allow you to, to do this survey off of leaps and bounds and then once they come back with a legal description, um, for the council to approve, which is what's gonna have to happen. We wanna make sure that our city attorney does take a look at that. So if it's possible, once you have that, if you can get that to Shannon, then maybe she can actually get it ran by him, even before that meeting.
Well, that way I can.
And then.
Yes.
Try to figure out how to run it up.
Right.
Yeah, uh, BG, uh, BGNA told me, once I had, uh, whatever from tonight, they could get it all prepared very quickly, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I'll second his motion.
All in favor?
Kevin Feathers.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Thank you, very much.
Yes, thank you.
This is a long one. Discussion, take action, amending of personal policies, chapter ten, section eight. And our service personnel includes public works, parks and recreation, and the code enforcement of animal control and community service workers. Basically, what we're trying to amend is that, uh.
Thank y'all.
Shorts may be worn from April through August and that shorts may be a solid color. How much shorts can be worn, worn by field personnel and shorts must be middling, mid thigh or longer. That's basically the, the change in there.
It's hot.
It's hot.
That's what this is about, it's hot.
This is hot.
And these guys wearing these Wranglers, they are soaking wet by bulk clock, so. I don't think the shoe should wear shorts, but everyone else should.
Give me discussion.
No. I'm all about people being comfortable and not burning the heck up and.
And we do even take specified dates.
Yeah.
So the chairman, I'm gonna make a motion then.
I'll make a motion to amend personnel property, chapter ten, section eight, for service personnel, uh, regarding the apparel that is listed on this, on this right here. I just condensed all that, so.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Kevin Feathers.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed. Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Thank you for your down two citizens input and I have something from, uh, Mary Hall. Dwayne made it out, but Mary, he's got your name on it. Oh, you just handed it to me. Okay, I hope y'all don't mind if I keep my seat, because I got it wrong. Trouble with my, my knee and my hip. Anyway. Um, what I wanted to talk to you about is the new veterans memorial garden that we established on July the first. Uh, there is a problem still with the water meters and it's leaking and, you know, it's been cut off for now. And so Dwayne has been going down every other day, taking a water hose and a sprinkler and watering the plants just to protect our, you know, our interest in it, because we've spent a lot of money, our own money that was hard earned to provide that garden. And so we want to know when the city is going to fix that or do we need to just hire a plumber, come and do it? You know, we don't know what to do, but we need to get our, because we have a drip system in there that's in place. But we can't use it because it leaks real bad at the water meter itself.
We fixed our portion of it. It, it's actually the drip system that needs to be repaired. So we have not had a chance to get back down there. I know you guys know we're busy. It's not that we don't care, we do care. But, you know, when we got leaks and different things going on.
Well, we turned it on, it, what, the water fills up in the hole. I mean, it just comes all the way to the top and then it goes out onto the.
When's the last time you turned it on, Dwayne?
This morning.
Yes, it was there this morning.
Because we, last I went and checked, the first leg wasn't leaking.
I'll tell you what I was doing.
Okay.
That there was a leak in the pipe going from the box to the fire.
To the bed.
It was cut off, it had to be dug up at some point, that's what I was doing.
And we did that. Well, it's connected to the drip system. That's true, because that, it's not. You're talking about the valve solution.
Excuse me a minute. Dwayne, excuse me a minute, I'm, I'm gonna take the conversation short real quick, uh, because we're not supposed to answer back to. Okay. To each others, okay? So, we'll let y'all talk about it outside. Okay, okay, that's fine. And, okay, and I think you have something else on here to. Yes, there is a, a big giant hole on Rabbit Cove Road at Timlock. That has been there for three weeks and it is a hazard to vehicles, to pedestrians, people walking their dogs. Uh, it's a great big hole, full of water. Uh, it's probably snakes and breeding mosquitoes as we speak. Uh, there was some orange, uh, plastic fencing around it, that's all come down, basically. I have pictures on my phone, if anybody wants to see them. Uh, it needs attention, very badly. And I don't know what delay is on finishing that little project, but it, it really is a hazard for people on our road. We'll pass that one also.
Okay.
Thank you for your input. Okay, so we'll go to the next item on the agenda.
I'm gonna go.
I say.
Leon Myers.
Pam Reed.
Y'all have a good night.
Chris Burkett.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Hey, y'all, good to see you.